It's six o'clock if we could bring this meeting to a start this evening. Pam, could you introduce the first applicant, please?
Continuance of application of Neon Percasta for property located at 6 Remper Street requesting a variance under subsection 125-3B2 of the Adams zoning bylaw to operate a cannabis cultivation facility and retail dispensary in an IP zoning district.
Okay, that is the first applicant this evening.
Excuse me, Jane, did you want to read the government's message?
I was planning on that, yeah. As soon as I... We wanted to do the second one first, okay? The second case first.
Okay, you want to change the agenda?
Yes, yeah. Jane.
Yeah.
So, this evening, we have two cases this evening. One is going to be pretty lengthy and one's going to be not too lengthy. So, we'd like to take care of the shorter ones first. So, Pam, if you could please introduce that applicant, please?
Chairman, I just want to say that I believe Jan just might want to announce that again. Thank you. Prior to his being admitted.
Okay. Okay. So, this evening, we're going to start with the second case this evening first due to the fact that the first one's going to be pretty lengthy. So, Pam, if you could please introduce the first applicant, the second applicant this evening?
Application of Jessie and Justin Kratz for property located at 1 Upper Linden Street, requesting a special permit under subsection 125-21 home occupation, the Adams zoning bylaw, to operate a residential kitchen for a cottage bakery in an R4 zoning district.
Okay, is Jessie, Jessie and Justin on the screen this evening?
Yes, we are. Hello?
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
If you could just explain to the board...
I'll go back later.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that. Could...
If you could just express to the board what your intentions are.
Sure. So, yeah, so my wife is operating a custom order home bakery. She's been permitted by the Board of Health and she's looking to run basically a custom order bakery out of our kitchen here at our home. So, it would be like, you know, basically, you know, baked goods that fall under the cottage kitchen regulations made to order by customers.
Okay, so... Does the board have any questions?
Just a couple of things. Could you explain how your, I mean, Upper Linden Street's a pretty narrow street that ends? Could you explain what the limits you're operating under because typically, you know, the board pan and the special permit put conditions on? So, if you can explain them, give us some idea.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Two cars down there for one time would be a problem, frankly.
Yeah, so we are, it's, my wife is scheduling the orders to be picked up on, you know, basically on when they're fully booked every half hour. So, it'd be one car coming down every half hour, but that's only if it was solidly booked and some days it's two or three orders and some days it's, it's more than that. But I'd say on average, we're probably looking at six or seven orders a day scheduled on half hour increments.
Hours of the people can pick up?
Um, I, it kind of varies. You know, some people have picked up seven, 7:30, eight o'clock in the morning to, you know, five, 5:30 in the, in the evening. Kind of Jess, Jessie's been working with their schedule to try and kind of coincide with what times work well for the, the customer and keeping them staggered.
And the little sign you have out there that just says bakery is all that you're planning as far as outdoor advertising?
Yes.
And how many, how many parking spots do you have on, on the property?
I have, well, we have one long, narrow driveway on the right side of the house and we park on the front and the left side of the house, too. So, it depends on, you know, it's a, a long, skinny, one-car-wide driveway on the right where the customers park.
I'm on a meeting with the zoning board, Justin Kratz. He's going for his license there or whatever. He was over here earlier.
Excuse me, can I ask the board to ask all members to mute their devices while, so we can hear who's supposed to be talking?
I can't, I may be on.
So... Is there any mail for on this?
No. There was one and it's included in your packet. Um, from Ann Dobrofsky and it should be in your...
Yeah. So, what, the mail? How do you receive your deliveries?
I'm sorry? How do we receive deliveries?
Deliveries of...
Um, we, we go and pick them up. No, we don't have anything delivered to the house in terms of ingredients and that kind of stuff. We go to, we go to the local stores and pick up.
Is there anybody on a Zoom call this evening in reference to this case?
We are, we are, if you can hear me.
I can hear you, sir, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. My name is Fred Mezwar. I'm the son of Leona Mezwar, who's a resident immediately next door to the bakery. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and also like to thank everyone on the board for your service to the town. Public service is very hard to come by late. With that said, our concerns that we'd like to express tonight are real-life concerns and not theoretical because we've been experiencing them as the business has been operating for the last approximately six months. All the concerns are traffic and volume of traffic related. Again, I, I encourage all the board members to perform a site visit if you are not familiar with the street. But also keep in mind that the snow piles, which we get every year, have significantly reduced because of the, because of the weather. But we're, we're major issues this winter. So, those of you that are not familiar with the street, as was mentioned, the street is one-car-wide. Two cars cannot be on the street at the same time and I would classify it more as a glorified driveway. There are three houses on the street. Address zero, one, and two, and they're all on the same side of the street. So, this is initial confusion for people looking for the bakery. Address zero, there are a minimum of three cars, a boat, a camper, all parked on their front lawn most of the time, which then congest, you know, causes more congestion. As was mentioned, at the, at 1 Upper Linden Street, there are three cars usually trying to maintain. One is parked on the lawn via illegal curb cop that was put in later last year. So, the street then continues down and there is no turnaround on the street. The street just terminates into our driveway, which then causes even more confusion because people are looking to get to the end of the street and have some way of turning around. To add to the congestion with, withwise to the street, there's a basketball hoop on the front lawn which overhangs the street, which makes the street even narrower at that point, especially for us with pickup trucks that would, could hit it. And more so because the town cannot plow the full width of the street without hitting the basketball hoop. So, the street becomes even more narrow.
Oh, boy.
There are two plastic trash bins that are constantly in the street, whether it's trash pickup day or not, which then adds to the narrowing of the street trying to get by, again, one-car-wide. And if they're not in the street, then they're usually tossed on top of a snowbank. The driveway where they mentioned that is on the, they're doing pickups is not wide enough for a car to actually be parked in the driveway and be able to open the door and exit the vehicle. They need to back out of their driveway so they are partially in the street, which then also completely blocks our driveway for them to exit the car and go perform their pickup. Even though there is a sign there saying pickup here, it is, it's not, it's not conducive to pickups. So, the sign is there, but it's not, it's not valid. I'll try not to take up too much more of your time. As I mentioned, the road ends in our driveway. So, cars tend to drive into our driveway, which wraps around the house to the back of the house. They turn around there. The condition of our driveway is very poor at best and we do not have the money to repair it and have an additional traffic using the driveway is not good. Numerous customers have already come to the house knocking on the door asking if this was the bakery. So, there is total confusion as far as somebody not knowing where they're going as soon as they enter onto Upper Linden Street, Upper Linden Street.
Is there a chance I can interject anywhere?
Are you done, sir?
Um, I got two more things. Cars that are picking up orders are, as I say, pulling into the end of their driveway. Cars are left running and it's sometimes for a solid 30 minutes, there's a car sitting there idling as conversations or whatever is going on inside the business. They mentioned that pickup orders were as far as five o'clock at night. This is not the case. They've had pickups, pickup orders as late as eight o'clock at night and in some cases there are two cars on the street trying to maneuver to get their, to get to the business. And in closing, I just want to mention, we bought on this street, as did other people, because it is a quiet street. Three houses, no through traffic, and adding a business of any volume would totally ruin that because it's a dead-end street. Any car that drives on the street, you automatically get up and look out the window to make sure it's coming to your house. This is definitely zoned R4 and it is densely populated. The houses are right on top of each other. There's no parking. Parking is on people's lawns. So, our concern is basically the increase in volume of traffic and any further damage to our, our property. Thank you.
Oh, boy, the doors are happy.
Okay.
Okay. As a, as a neighbor on an adjacent street, may I interject?
Again, but we can't see you. What is your name?
My name is Jean Rice. I live on Daniel's Court. I am parallel to the house in question.
Yes.
And I would just like to state, I don't see that any of those items he has pointed out as a big item. There may have been in the beginning some confusion about people locating the bakery, but that has been taken care of. And living there, I have not seen a lot of people turning around in that driveway. They have all gone in, picked up their goods, backed up, and gone to back down the street.
So, again, do you live on the street or do you live on a neighboring street?
I live on Daniel's Court. My house about the street.
On the other side of the stockade fence.
I'm going to ask everybody on the Zoom call to address the board only, please, keep it simple. So, ma'am, if you could finish up?
Well, I simply want to state that I think the complaints were overstated. They've been put out of context and I don't believe it's a fair rendering of what is actually happening.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Is there...
I'd like to make a comment also.
Oh, I'd like to speak in too as a neighbor and a butter.
Okay. We can't see either of you two, so if you could just announce your name, please, for the board?
I'm Jerry Labonte. I live on the corner of Upper Linden...
Jerry Labonte's talking.
...and the main road here, Edmund Street. And I didn't even know that they were in business for the first three months or so and I've seen no problems with their, their situation. I don't think the, you know, complaints were justified and I think they are doing a wonderful job and they're controlling it very well.
May I speak as a butter?
Yes, ma'am, if you could just announce your name.
Hello?
Yes, if you could just announce your name, please.
My name is Judith Belanger and we live at 31 Edmund Street, which is right on the corner of Upper Linden Street. And I have, I, I have had no problem whatever with traffic. I see FedEx trucks, UPS trucks, I see the Cosella waste trucks, a huge truck going down the street. They have absolutely no problem backing down. And I see occasionally, maybe once or an hour, maybe in 15 minutes occasionally, a car picking up a pre-ordered cake. Maybe they paid $50 for a birthday cake. We don't have an, you know, retail business going on here. I don't have any problem at all with the traffic. I have been here for 40 years and I don't see any problem at all. And I'm home all day long, I'm retired and, and believe me, if we had a raceway going down Upper Linden Street, I would be very concerned, but that is not the case.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else this evening of reference to the Linden Street permit? Pam, you're none. Does the board have any questions?
Can, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Alan, I think wanted to talk, he's on mute.
Alan? Alan, we can't hear you. We still can't hear you, bud.
You're on mute.
You're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name's Alan Mendel. I'm in a butter to Mr. Kratz's property. I'm one house on beyond Ms. Mezwar's property. I sit kind of on a hill where I can view what's going on down on that street. The street is, is a dead-end street. It's approximately a little under 200 feet off of Edmund. I know one of the concerns they were talking about being a narrow street, which it is, and Daniel's Court where I live is also a narrow street. Being that they're old streets, deliveries still go on on those streets without any, any problems on either one of those streets. As mentioned, with the trash pickup or with UPS delivery or FedEx deliveries, it's no different than the little business of going on with Mrs. Kratz in regards to people coming down stopping. You have to understand, he's a pre-ordered, so the baked goods are already packaged, ready to go. People stop. Mrs. Or Mrs. Kratz or someone from the household comes out, delivers the bakery to their vehicle and away they go. Viewing most of the pickups, if they're there a minute or two, that's a long time. Yes, granted, some people will have some conversation and when it's usually done, there's no vehicles on the road. In concerns to the snow, it's a dead-end street, so the town has only one way to plow it, which is directly forward, which is down at the end of the street. The snow piles up and as in this year, it has, and the town has come and removed that pile. So, if there was a concern, the town had taken care of it. They're good at removing snow piles when, when they feel that it's a dead-end street and it could be a concern to safety. There is a driveway that they do a pickup. There's a sign there that says pickup area. I've seen cars pull in there, they stop. You can open the door very easily, get your delivery, back up into the roadway and leave. I don't feel it's been a concern. I have lots of issues. If a car has to wait, he's not waiting anymore, any longer than a minute. Or if there is a conversation, a car happens to pull down the street, I've seen where the car quickly exits the area so the party can get down. Understand, there's only three houses on the street. The first house, being there is some items in the area, but it doesn't obstruct the view of the road. Second is Mr. Kratz's home and third is Mrs. Mezwar's home. The only concern would be Mrs. Mezwar's home because it's the third one on the street. Therefore, the second one pulls into the driveway and therefore would only be one house that would be affected. Most of the people up here are retired and therefore we really have to come and go at a specific time that a minute or two is not going to make a difference. I feel that the, the permit should be granted to this party. They're a great bakery. It's a, it's a, when she's baking, it's a great smell in the area and as we know, there are no fresh bakeries in our town. So, it's actually a service to our town. It's a service to our people coming into town where they can get fresh bakery and if you haven't tried it, please do. Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to ask the board if they have any questions for the applicant.
Can I, can I just, I, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but can I address the board on some inaccuracies, please, or, or no?
I don't think it's necessary, sir. We're going to ask questions and...
Okay. Sure.
All I have to say is, there is a concern with the parking. Is it possible that you dedicate somewhere on your property not in the street that your, people can park at, your customers? They need to pull off the street. The gentleman was just saying that, you know, it's, it's an inconvenience of a minute. Is there a fire truck or an ambulance coming up that street? They might have a minute to wait. You know, that's, that's, that's not very good. If you could dedicate one or two spots or you only say you only get a customer in time, just make sure they park there and that way nobody backs into the neighbor's driveway and there's not a problem getting emergency vehicles by them. That's all I have.
Absolutely. We can, we can further, I mean, and again, with, within what, what our regulations are for, for signage, but we can certainly even designate that with it, with a sign if that's permitted, but we can also get the word out. A lot of my wife's business is done through Facebook and we can make sure that we get the word out there that this is the spot and please don't park anywhere else. We can absolutely do that.
Anybody else have any questions for the other thing?
May I add, may I add one thing, please?
Could I pipe in one more time? A neighbor, a butter? Yeah. I have never seen any problem on Upper Linden Street. People here are very courteous. If there's a, a delivery or something, or we have a delivery from LP Adams or whatever, people are very patient. They're very kind, you know, that they don't, you know, get, get up in a huff about, you know, waiting for a minute for somebody to back out of the road. You know, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's a narrow street. Yes, it is. But we, it's fine. It's, people are good. People are fine. They're courteous and then we don't have a problem with that. And I don't think there's a problem with the traffic whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I need to interject one more thing. I'm at 33 Edmund and the corner of Upper Linden and I've had the people park in front of my house and walk down to get some of their deliveries. So, they are having some assistance in that area.
Thank you, sir.
May, may I just add something in closing?
Go ahead, sir.
Our intent tonight was not to stop the business from progressing. Our purpose for this evening is to have traffic issues addressed, however that may be in parking issues. If it means parking on the north side of their house for their pickups, that is an acceptable solution as now it's not, they're not coming to the end of the street into our area. And lastly, Mr. Mendel did mention about the town and snow. We've requested several times this past winter from the DPW director himself to remove the snow piles and those, those requests have all gone unanswered. So, that's not a viable solution, Alan, as far as, you know, getting the snow to be addressed.
I'd like to interject here, Judy Belanger again.
If I must, may I say, all the other people voicing, not seeing issues, they do not live on the street. That's a big difference. Thank you.
Yeah, but I live right on the corner of the street and I watch traffic going down the street. And I did see the payloader go down there last week and take out a few scoops of snow at the end of the street because of, you know, the storm. And they're very, very, the DPW is wonderful. Yeah, it's great, pull it out. But, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not going to, you know, argue with you about that. Bye-bye.
We also, our driveways are on Linden Street. They're not on Edmund.
At this time, I'm going to ask the board to entertain a motion with conditions. Don't move.
Hello, it's Judy Belanger again. If anyone wants to park in front of our house and walk down to the Kratz's Bakery, they are more than welcome to do so on Edmund Street. There's no problem.
Thank you, ma'am. Is it possible to cut the, the video or the video, the voices off for now? No.
I think Brian...
At this, at this time, right. At this time, we're going to close the, the hearing from the public and the board's going to entertain a motion for this case this evening. So, at this time, does any board members have a motion with potential conditions for this case? Potentially for the parking and the timing?
I would move that we approve the special permit with the following three conditions. There'd be one designated parking spot, clearly marked for customer parking. That the hours of operation be limited to 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, excluding Sundays. And no deliveries for the business at the premises, with the exception of normal FedEx, UPS type trucks that can fit on the street.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Pam, if you could shoot that back to us, please, when you're ready. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Pam, if you could shoot that back to us, please, when you're ready.
Motion made by uh, Member Kern, seconded by Member Ryan Miller to approve the application of Jesse and Justin Kratz for property located at one Upper Linden Street requesting a special under subsection one twenty-five dash twenty-one, home occupation of the Adams zoning bylaw to operate residential kitchen for a cottage bakery in an R four zoning district with three conditions. One, one designated parking spot to be clearly marked. Two, hours are to be limited from seven AM to seven PM with no Sundays. Three, no deliveries at premises other than from a FedEx or UPS truck.
Well, I just to be clear, I don't want to do anything else.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I, could I ask one question? Or I, I don't know when I, I don't know when I'm allowed to speak or not, I don't want to interrupt inappropriately.
My turn.
Um, the, the, the Sundays condition is a little bit, um, that, that, that's a, a day that a lot of people, I mean, relatively speaking, a lot of people do order on. That's, that's sort of a financial hardship for her to not be able to provide goods on Sundays.
Okay, yeah. Well, can we shorten the hours on Sunday from eleven to three?
Um, she, she closes at three typically. There, there tends to be, and I, I, I do appreciate what you're all are trying to do and, and certainly can, you know, I'm not trying to be argumentative. We do get some customers that like to order some baked goods early on Sunday mornings for their Sunday gatherings, whatever they may have going on at their houses. Um, we can certainly end by three, that's not a problem at all. Um, but Sunday mornings, people do like to pick some things up.
I, I would amend.
May I offer compromise?
This uh, it's, it's close to the public at this point, sir. Thank you.
Uh, I, I would amend the hours to Sunday limited to seven to noon.
That, that's absolutely fine.
Yeah, the pickup's on Sunday morning, I can reach for that. I think it is primarily a residential area and I kind of feel as well, we need to respect that.
Yep, no, that, that's absolutely fine. Thank you.
I'll send the amendment. Okay, we have a, an amendment with a second. Pam, if you could just bring that up and send it back to us. One more thing, please.
A motion made by Member Kern, seconded by Member Ryan Miller, um, to amend the third condition to read. I mean, the second condition to read that the hours will be um, Sunday, seven AM to twelve PM.
And probably for clarity, Mondays through Saturdays, seven AM to seven PM.
Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay. At this time, we'll take a vote on that motion?
Yep.
Yes. All in favor, your, your special permit has been granted. Um, there'll be a fourteen day decision notice and a twenty-eight day appeal period for the, the.
So fourteen days in my office, prepared, twenty-one days from the town clerks where it is timestamp and the um, if anybody who wants to oppose it has that liberty.
Okay, so there'll be a, a decision notice on this case within fourteen days in Pam's office. And you'll build a work together to follow up on that. At that point in time, it'll be a twenty-one day appeal period. But other than that, special permit has been granted this evening.
Thank, thank you very much. We, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Pam, if you can introduce our second applicant this evening, please.
Continuance of application of E N Per Casta for properties located at six Renfro Street requesting a variance under subsection one twenty-five dash three B two of the Adams zoning bylaw to operate cannabis cultivation facility in retail dispensary in an IP zoning district.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to read this letter from the governor. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelve, two thousand twenty orders preceding certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC thirty-eight, the national eighteen, the governor's March fifteenth and July second, twenty twenty orders imposing strict limitations on a number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Adams Board of Appeals is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort has been made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for the order. We have posted today's agenda in ordinance with the open bean laws, which include the call information for the meeting. Despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide a real-time access for the public to participate in today's meeting. A recording of this meeting can be made available by request as this meeting is being recorded using the Zoom platform. We appreciate, we, as we participate, please note that all votes taken during this meeting will be by a roll call vote. Thank you. So um, at this time, I'd also like to make an announcement that one of our board members, Mr. Giugetti, has decided to excuse himself from this case this evening due to a conflict of interest. So we still have plenty of board members to uh, entertain this case this evening. So that being said, I am, if you could uh, if you make sure we got what we need on there. Hold on a minute. I mean, if you could present to the board your intentions, please.
Yes, hello, how are you? So we're seeking a variance that will permit uh, the development of a cannabis cultivation facility and dispensary at six Renfro Street, which is currently designated as an industrial park. And we're hoping to obtain variance for a redesignation as industrial in order to successfully apply with the Cannabis Control Commission um, at the state level. We cannot do so until uh, the property obtains such a variant.
Okay, so essentially what you're looking to do is the property itself is zoned um, industrial park. And you're looking to use the property for industrial use?
That's correct, as every other business um, neighboring six Renfro is already designated industrial. Um, we think that our proposed use is consistent with the intent of the ordinance and the manufacturing history of the site. We also believe that the business will provide substantial economic good to the Town of Adams with the granting of this variance and create employment for the townspeople and bring considerable tax revenue to the town.
Okay. Did everybody had a chance to review? Any questions for the applicant?
Through, through the chair, I'd like to have an opportunity to speak in opposition.
Go ahead, sir, if you want to introduce yourself to the board.
Sure. Absolutely. Attorney Egan, representing S N P Holdings LLC. The owner of eight Renfro Street and a statutory a butter, as well as conserve through control which operates a business at eight Renfro Street. Uh, quite simply, the applicant has not met the legal sta- standard for the granting of a use var- variance set forth in general laws, chapter forty A, section ten. Uh, or the uh, Town of Adams, section one twenty-five dash three dot B two of the bylaw. Um, none of the arguments put forward by the applicant meet that standard. The standard is, is clear and the standard is that uh, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the chapter would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or appellate. Uh, Massachusetts case law uh, provides that the alleged hardship must quote, relate to the premises for which the variance is thought, sought. An applicant for a variance must show that the land shape prohibits development consistent with the ordinance. And uh, in the present case, the applicant states that the current configuration of the property creates a hardship of the desired use. That's not the, that's not the test. Uh, the, the, the test is that the land shape prohibits development consistent with the ordinance. The IP zoning district prohibits this use. It's been considered by the Town of Adams and specifically prohibited. Uh, in this case, uh, as the applicant suggested, there's commercial uses that can be uh, undertaken, in fact, have been undertaken at this location that are consistent with the zoning ordinance and are allowed in, in the zoning dis- district. Therefore, by definition, it, it fails, it fails the, the test. In fact, there's been no evidence provided to support the assertion. Uh, it, it, the way the law works is if you fail one, if you fail one prong of the test, you fail the test. Even if the zoning board of appeals determines that a hardship does exist, uh, we can move on to the next, which is the hardship is owing to the circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape or topography. There's no assertion made by the applicant that anything having to do with the shape, topography or soil conditions creates the hardship. The argument is essentially that they want to be able to uh, conduct a business in the zoning district that's not allowed in the district. But there's been no suggestion that due to shape, topography or soil conditions uh, this property, there's a hardship that's not uh, experienced by other properties in the zoning district. Uh, furthermore, the applicant's really saying two things as a legal ma- matter. They're saying they want a use var- variance, but at the same time, they're essentially saying they want the zoning bylaw of the Town of Adams amended to allow for this use uh, industrial uses in the zone. Um, you know, Town of Adams has got a, a well-thought-out regulatory zoning bylaw. This use has been considered and, and prohibited. Um, furthermore, you know, the noxious smell generated by facilities such as this are well-documented. Uh, allowing the variance would not only be substantially detrimental to the employees and customers of the C T C companies, uh, but also to surrounding property owners. Uh, there's already overflow parking concerns by my clients that they experience when there are football games and other events. Uh, on-street parking is just a non-starter due to the number of tractor trailers that come up and down Renfro Street, which would make it essentially impassable. Uh, and furthermore, the variance gar- generates from the intent or purpose of the Adams zoning bylaws, I stated, this has been considered and strict, strictly prohibited uh, to allow a use var- variance, which the Supreme Judicial Court has stated clearly is not a legal right and should be granted sparingly, uh, flies in the face of the zoning bylaw. In fact, to allow this variance without further support due and owing to the shape, topography or sto- or soil conditions, essentially takes the Adams zoning bylaw and throws it out, out the window. Um, in closing, uh, my clients uh, urge the zoning board of appeals to deny this application because it fails to meet the clear le- legal standard, both statutory and case law. Thank you for your time this evening. If you have any questions, I'm happy to, to address them.
Thank you. This time is uh, is there anybody else that would like to uh, speak up about this case this evening on the Zoom call?
Sure, this is Attorney Joe Calone speaking. Hello?
Hello, sir, how are you doing? We can't hear you too good, but go ahead and give it a shot.
Okay. My apologies. I drafted the letter, which John submitted. Um, there are essentially five considerations for the panel to consider and um, you're very familiar with them, as I'm sure you've handled quite a variety of variation of, of variance requests uh, throughout the year. Um, there's a number of common sense considerations for the board there. Um, beginning with uh, whether or not the uh, intent is consistent with the ordinance. And despite the fact of, of what you've heard earlier, I think if anyone familiar with that area is, is very well aware of the types of businesses that surround John's property. That's John Burke, the owner of six Renfro, the person who's seeking the uh, the variance. Um, you've got the facility, uh, the seven eleven and the gas pumping facility. There's a number of businesses surrounding him. Um, that all are zoned industrial. In fact, that entire area going up um, through the current highway, that, that, that entire immediate surrounding area is generally zoned industrial. Um, John's property is the, as you probably are all well aware, is the first um, business that you cross when you e- enter into the industrial park. And it's separated from the rest of the industrial park by the uh, the railroad tracks. I think uh, what he's requesting here would be consistent with the businesses in the area, that is to have an, an industrial zoning. I also think, as I outlined in my uh, letter, uh, turn, in terms of consistency, uh, it, there's a long history of it being industrial type of an area. Going back to the eighteen eighties, that area has essentially been an industrial area. It was only when it was rezoned recently as an industrial park that they included uh, the front section, which is John's property, um, which, which now is, is different sort of from his adjoining butters as, as they are zoned industrial. So we've got um, a, a, a consistency with, within the ordinance and a consistency with historical use. The other areas that are in the common sense uh, concerns, I think for the board, have to do with the um, number one, the hardship uh, that's been created uh, that he's trying to, to, to solve. And that is, John's business was there for twenty-some years. Uh, he's, uh, that business is closed. He's been trying to find another use for that property for several years. He's also had him been marketing it for several years, all without success. The hardship is for him is to continue to main that prop, maintain that property at a very high level, which is what he does. Uh, and to continue to pay, you know, all the uh, services and taxes and security, et cetera, along with it and not have a use for it. So right now, it is a hardship to him. It is a financial hardship. Um, the other sort of common sense considerations for uh, the board have to do with the beneficial use of that property going forward. What John is proposing to do there with this business is to upgrade all those properties. Uh, he would be upgrading, as I mentioned in the letter, with heating systems, insulation, some computer systems, security. And there would be an improvement on the property as opposed to the way it stands right now. Aside from the improvement of the properties, it would be an economic benefit to the town which was alluded to by his partner. That's employment, it's tax revenue, it's putting a building to use. And it's essentially joining into a. Piece of commerce that whether you agree with or not, it's 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 a considerable factor in our Commonwealth now to. For him to continue to him to create this business. Lastly, I think what's a, I would say a major concern for anyone addressing whether or not this variant should be allowed has to do with. Would there be any detriment? And I don't think there is a detriment, as I outlined in the letter, to i- if the variance is granted. The access to that site is excellent. As everyone knows, there that area was completely revamped in the last several years with that roundabout. It couldn't be better in terms of for political for 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 public access to that site. Anyone who looks at that area, there's considerable parking. That there's parking both in what would be the. The dispensary and there's there's parking behind the the buildings where there would be the grow sites. So there's there's considerable space there at that facility. The odor, as was outlined by his partner and will be further submitted to the building department. There are industrial air quality filtration systems that are planned to be installed there. They the there they will be filtration systems of the highest quality, commercial quality. The adjacent properties aren't going to be affected because they're already zoned industrial. And they have a variety of different uses. We'd ask you to take into consideration the the. Points that were raised in the letter, which I do think faithfully adhere to your considerations as board members with regard to whether to grant a variance or not. There's five conditions there. And we've tried to outline how we can comply with each of them, and we hope you will vote in favor of the variance.
Through the chair, if I may just make a statement. Even if everything Attorney Colonna said was taken as true. It still doesn't meet the standard. And the standard is that due and owing to the shape, topography or soil condition. This property has got a hardship, doing oh, do and owing to one of those things. The hardship is clear. It is not that the property owner is having a hard time sell selling it. I get that. My clients get that. It's unfortunate, but the legal standard for the granting of a use. Variance is very clear. It is not that. He can't sell it and that the adjacent properties are industrial and the historic use has been in place. That that's not how zoning work. That's not how forty A, section ten works. That's not how section one twenty-five dash three B two works. And the case law is is very clear. The Massachusetts appellate court. And the Supreme Judicial Court have have ruled on these cases. And so while Attorney Colonna sets out five considerations and talks about co- common sense. You know, a use variance is really the most serious act that any permit granting authority can take. Because it has the ability to frustrate the entire zoning scheme. And in this case, the fact that it's adjacent to an area, it just that a- a- and other activities are allowed, including manufacturing. This use is very specific. This use has been considered by the Town of Adams and this town, this use has been prohibited. So leave it at that. If you have any questions, I'm happy to 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 address it.
Thank you. John, is there anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, I think the Z B A board has to take a hard look at why the property was included in the industrial park back when the park was formed. The property was used for industrial use since eighteen eighty. I think it was probably just in. Function of it being easier to include my property into the industrial park zoning back when the industrial park was formed. My property had the only existing building within the footprint of the industrial park. It was always industrial zoned. So I think we just need to take a hard look at why it was included in the industrial park zoning and should it be returned back to industrial.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions?
I'd like to ask a couple.
So how long has this property been on the market, John?
Roughly five years.
All right. What's the, what's your asking price versus the assessed value versus an appraised value?
I haven't had an appraise. I've invested one point three million dollars into the property. I was my last price, I think, was like nine hundred ninety thousand was the asking price.
And and you've had it on the market how long?
Five years, plus or minus.
Okay.
And also with multiple listing companies, not just a single company.
That's correct. I've had four different real estate agents.
That was my only question, I think.
Do you happen to know when that took place, when it was switched from industrial to industrial park? That was probably in the eighties, maybe?
I want to say in the nineties. Mid nineties. And again, I think my property was just lumped into the rest of the Arnold Print Works property. Once industrial park was planned. For what reason? I don't know. I mean, if you look at all the.
It's the first one on the street. That's probably why.
Well, it's also the entrance to the.
To the park, yeah. But it still has, it has frontage on Route Eight as well as.
Yeah, it was the Renfro property, Renfro Manufacturing. And that was the main entrance. For Renfro Manufacturing.
Originally, it was a shipping depot for L J Philat and Sons who built the property in eighteen eighty. It really wasn't attached to the Arnold Print Works complex until somewhere in the late nineteen seventies.
The history is that that's an industrial site.
Absolutely, yes.
Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
I got a question.
The case being heard this evening is is the use.
Right.
I I have a I have a question on. If we grant this and it's running as a business. Your attending, your intention is to sell cannabis at retail there, correct?
That's correct.
I'm picturing a line, I'm picturing the entranceway into the current parking lot at John's facility. Now it's nicely wired and a lot of that stuff. About how many cars a day do you think you're going to be looking at there?
Ian, do you have any data on that?
Well, the parking lot currently has more than ten parking spaces. And we expect likely a hundred to a hundred and fifty visitors a day.
Okay, that's, I just did some back of the envelope calculations and you and I are consistent on that. You're a little higher than my my estimate. In in any case, it would be the parking and the. The egress and all that is adequate for that, in my opinion. So I don't have a, I don't have a problem.
If we're through with questions for them before we enter into discussions. Sir, if we're through with questions for them, can we? Close the hearing and then have the discussion like it's be is is merging over to into the next territory, really.
Through through the chair, before you close the public hearing, if I may. If if the board hasn't done so already. I urge the board to consult with town council before it takes any vote on this application. Quite frankly, what I'm hearing oscillates between. An amendment to the zoning bylaw to allow for an industrial use. That's prohibited. And the granting of a use vi- vi- variance. And certainly, the board is free to take whatever action it it wishes to take. But I might recommend that the board consult with town council before it takes any action on this app- application. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, let's. Open a meeting up to the board members for discussion here. Now, it's it's interesting to learn that it was in the nineties when the property was originally zoned industrial and then switched to industrial park. I didn't know the exact date of that, but I knew it took place at some point. That wasn't too long ago. You know, once again, I just, tonight's case is specifically about a zoning. Use change from I P to I. Industrial park to I. As far as the details of the candidacy activities that would. There'd be another case down the road and and be addressed with the planning board as well. But ultimately, what we're here to entertain this evening is the use of the property. Now, there's no doubt about it that piece of property has been industrial use the majority of its life. It's only been recently where it's it's been hooked into the industrial park.
Now, if we go back, if we decide we want to make that property declared as industrial as opposed to I P. Don't we have to go up to town meeting with that, too?
That's a zoning bylaw change, yeah.
I'm sorry?
That's a zoning bylaw change, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Just like they're talking about change of use. Use variances are in our bylaws. But it has no bearing here.
Okay.
Well, the bylaw does allow the zoning board to grant use variance. That's clear. I mean, I. With all due respect to Dennis, I I can argue some of his points. The. I mean, there is just the physical aspects of this parcel are entirely distinct from all the other parcels in the industrial park. The others are all contained definitely within the park. They're on the east side of the railroad track. They don't about around the the park access of park. This parcel is a little bit different.
Road frontage is on the park.
You know, the, you know, the road frontage is on the park side. If I have my suspicions as to why this parcel was included in the I P way back when, but they're just suspicions. You know, it could be several different reasons why it was. This parcel, you know, there is, while it may front on Route Eight, any access to Route Eight would be difficult. Short from this parcel and probably da- probably dangerous, given its location to. People, so, you know, it is kind of a squirrely parcel and, you know, that's the part that I think. I believe with all due respect to to Dennis Egan, who's a good, good attorney. You know, it it is a little bit of an odd duck compared to the other parcels in the zoning district in which it is situated.
I'd also like to add that I don't believe that you could change the access. Onto Route Eight there with the roundabout there.
It'd be way up the hill.
You'd have a truck popping out right in front of the roundabout there. It'd be dangerous, you know? It wouldn't be a plausible option.
You know, I I think the issues and just to, you know, issues like the odor control and the odor to the adjoining property. Glance issues over the amount of parking, that's all subject to site plan review and the special process that. The Stevens Board's going to have to have to deal with down the road if we have to use.
I mean, yeah, I mean, granted, it is an industrial area. I mean, it was formerly a paper mill, which is all industrial. The his guardhouse was actually the guardhouse for the paper mill, for the textile. I mean, that's why it went into everything. Because the guardhouse actually was the guardhouse for the textile run. That's where you went in and came out of the middle hall.
I don't work through the E, B and C of the ordinance and the bylaw, you know. Over how the board feels about is the little literal enforcement. Involve a substantial hardship and financial aura. And what the bylaws said. You know, so does it beat that test?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Jay Green, Town Administrator. On that point, as Mr. Carnes mentioned. I just wanted to to speak and give the board a little bit of background that as a town administrator, I have been working with Mr. Burke for quite some time.
They can see it.
Nobody wants to see me.
Can't wait. Hey, we just want to see you smile on your face.
You can't, but that. I think it's good information just for the board to have as they deliberate that I've been working with. Mr. Burke for quite some time to try to find a use for that that property. It's a beautiful parcel. It is a difficult location in the sense of what the boards are to talk about. But in terms of financial hardship, you know, I can tell you that John's had quite a bit of time trying to market that that property. Town's insisted. He's made a good offer for the town. There's no point in the town purchasing it. We don't have a use for it. He's attempted to work with the Senior Railroad Museum or purchase it. That organization's a nonprofit and doesn't have the amount of money or the ability to market. So he he's done due diligence in trying to to put on the market. We were actually quite pleased. He came forward with this and we discovered this, the the zoning issue. I felt the board had a pretty good conversation about it and although I'm not town council, I can tell you that, you know, Mr. Carnes is correct in in terms of. What the board is being asked to look at. Chapter forty-eight, section ten speaks about variances. That's been codified into the the town zoning bylaws under one twenty-five-three. And that's what you folks have discussed tonight. That's what you're being asked to to debate and to focus on in in terms of what those elements are of that. Of that statute, as long as the board certainly feels as though you've had a robust conversation about it and you're convinced that you've met all of those. The board can certainly beat that variance. I I think the record would seem to be clear that you're discussing a variance on the existing zone. I'll also say, too, just in terms of the zoning board, if you folks have a deal with this, this is why when we're looking at our zoning. Why we're going back periodically, look at it and correct these problems. And this is one of the reasons why we don't necessarily have in Adams a commercial development that we would like to have, that other communities have. Because when we actually attempt to sit down and and develop a business, we find that we have, we have some issues. So that's why last year at town meeting, we had that deals point. Yes, that is one of the solutions is to go back to town meeting and ask to continue to change this, change the use schedule, et cetera. And we'll certainly continue to look at that as we go. So that's just some background. That's my my take on it from. my take on it from a town administrator's perspective. And I thank the board for their deliberation. And I thank Ian, everyone, for their interest and John's interest in trying to bring this business to the town of Adams. We're grateful for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I'll hide again.
Is there any further discussion? I think at this time, we can entertain more.
Question is, the motion is in this case, should we trade to use?
No. Motion is to grant a variance to allow them to do the business.
Okay.
But I just want to caution the board that you have to be careful in making specific findings to on A, B, and C in the bylaw. So, exactly how does literal enforcement of the chapter involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or applicant? So, how does the request in front of us meet that test? And we need to be very careful about that because, believe me, Mr. Egan's a good attorney and he'll take advantage of it if we don't.
So, you're saying table isn't until we talk to council?
No, we just have to deliberate very carefully and make accurate findings that we believe how it meets that test. You can do the same thing for B, about the hardship that involves the physical aspects of the property. And C, which to me is the one that different people, very rational people can differ quite a bit on, is the you know, without either substantial detriment to the public good or nullifying or substantially deriving derogating from the intent or the purpose of this chapter. I mean, those are things that, you know, that's general enough. Frankly, that's almost a personal opinion kind of thing. At the end of the day, we have to make specific findings on each one of those. And they need to be in the record. And, you know, that would be my advice based on my years of planning experience.
Discuss A if you'd like right now. The literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise to the applicant. In this particular case, the beautiful piece of property has been, you know, for sale for quite some time. It's kind of fallen into a situation where it has limited use due to it being moved into the industrial park in the 90s. And, you know, in this particular case, it's holding back the owner to be able to go forward with any different uses, you know, different prospects for the property.
I would have a tendency to agree that it would mean the requirements for A, only for the simple fact that it is, and it isn't something to be just put on the market. It's not a market for five years.
It's been quite a long time. And it's a beautiful piece of property. There's nothing holding back. There's nothing wrong with it. It's wonderful condition.
And he's made a substantial investment and it sounds like he's not going to recover what he has invested in it, even under the terms of the sales, which is current losses it is. He's been trying for five years.
I think he's met A.
He's definitely met A, that's for sure. Going lead into B, the hardship of owing to circumstances related to the soil condition shaped topography of such land or structures and especially affects such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it's located. And the first thing that comes to my mind is the stone retaining wall that's along Route 8 completely limits it to having a different entrance into the property there, you know? You can't change what's there.
Right, you can't come through that wall, period.
So
I think the separation of this property by the railroad tracks from the rest of the industrial park, which is very self-contained, is another unique, makes this property unique within the IP zoning district. No other parcel in the district suffers from that particular situation. And no other has an active commercial use immediately across Rentwood Street from it, but has a lot of traffic going in and out. I believe the back portion of this property actually still isn't zoned industrial. Jerry, am I correct on that? Do you know?
I believe so.
Yeah.
So, the back behind the buildings, the grass area that's got some landscaping in it is still industrial.
Okay, great.
Headed towards North Adams.
I can get in that if you want. Okay. Thank you.
I think C is a little bit harder to deal with because, you know, obviously we have very respected local business that has some concerns about what's going in across the railroad and maybe going in across the railroad tracks from them. They see it as potentially harmful. If it is odor, I would certainly encourage the planning board, if they need to, require the applicant to pay or a odor control specialist to review their plans for odor mitigation when they consider the special permit. And maybe as part of a special permit, require a monitoring system of some sort. You know, I mean, it is a different use, not custom to it, so there's probably a lot to be learned about. About them. But, you know, that is a site plan and special permit issue, not a use variance issue specifically.
Apologies, may I interject for just one second about odor mitigation?
Right, sir.
This facility will be completely closed off. There will be no air circulation.
This is immaterial with this board's consideration, technically. This is for the Special Permit Granting Authority is the one who should be paying attention to that. I mean, other
It sounds, you have answers to those concerns, but at the same time, it's not the concern of this board this evening.
Thank you.
So, the question is, do they need the requirements for B?
I believe they do, yes.
Do I continue to agree?
Then we'd see.
There is a section on this. It's up in the next room there.
So, here's the IP.
Yeah, there is DNA.
No, it looks like it is. Because I think that's a, I think it's a wish. I haven't seen anything on that.
It looks like it.
It looks like it.
Yeah, it goes right out there.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Oh. Is this what we're talking about? Or are you talking other than that?
It's, this is, here's Rentwood Street. So, this is the property. And it looks like so it looks like, you know, I don't know, you can't tell where the property lies.
It does go, I mean, the garage right there, the garage should go to here and there is land that you can see from the road that slithers out like that.
But, you know, I can't tell where the property lies.
Yeah.
Let's have a discussion about C here.
Thanks, Jerry. I mean, is it going to be substantially detrimental to the consistency of the public area?
I don't believe so.
And we're basing that on what?
Well, it's, the existing condition of the property is wonderful. These folks are looking to spend tremendous amount of money here. They're not going to do this in vain. The traffic that would be created by this would be, I think, be able to be absorbed by that piece of property. There's parking, there's, you know, the highways right there with the roundabout, you know, flow of traffic in and out smoothly.
I think also because of this change of use doesn't increase or decrease the demand of the property.
Right.
So, it should have no greater impact than the rest of the IP businesses that are located in the IP park.
It's not like we're looking at residential property here where we're looking to
turn the garbage into a house?
Right.
Truck traffic doesn't weigh in. I've heard a couple times about the traffic, it doesn't weigh in on this subject here. Not to industrial park, designed for.
You know, I think, you know, the nature of the traffic for this proposed business, again, is it's really, that's really appropriate for the planning board to be considering for a special permit process. You know, this is more of a retail use. What John's had there has been a construction business, which typically don't have a whole lot of in and out traffic, other than, you know, his vehicles coming and going during the course of the day or some deliveries. But if you got one to introduce retail in there, then it's a different, you know, it's a different animal. You know, no matter, you know, whether it's 100 visitors a day, 150 or 250, it's different than what the construction business operated.
And do we consider that as part of C as being not the overall good of the whatever's going on in the park? I mean, is the retail business going to interfere with everything?
There's a retail business straight across the street, probably sees
Yeah, but it's not in the park.
But it's just a comparison to the volume
I understand, but it's not, the whole thing is it's not in the park. I mean, that's the whole catch of the whole thing, that it's in the IP. I mean, I'm not saying it wouldn't be a good thing, but we also have to be, like you said, we have to be very careful with it.
Question would be, do you believe that the volume of retail going in and out of the site would have a negative impact on the abutting properties?
Well, we don't know that because it would be the planning board that would make that decision on how many, how much vehicle traffic is allowed there. And they could do an impact study in regards to it for traffic flow, but that's, we can't guess on that. They can say 10, we can say 100.
So, what are we stalling on? I'm missing something to, so we can move on this decision. What are we missing?
We just have to have a reason, a justifiable reason for C. We, the board feels that we have a justifiable reason for A and B. We need a justifiable reason for C.
And, you know, and this is where it's kind of a personal decision over whether the, you know, I think particularly for substantial detriment.
Right.
Let's say substantial detriment. And the, you know, considering the the retail aspects, the change in the nature of the traffic, potential for concerns over, well, some of the things that properly are part of the special permit process, but, you know, I'm sure the planning board will give those things due consideration and make a condition the heck out of it if they, if they need to, in very safe grounds.
Detriment to the public good.
I don't see a detriment.
I could see some detriment, but I'm not sure I would put it up to the level of substantial detriment.
Right.
Then there's going to be more, there's going to be more traffic. There's going to be foot traffic.
But it's not a residential area.
But underneath the right circumstances, it can be contained to the site.
Yes.
Yes, the site can absorb that type of activity, yes. But therefore, of substantial detriment, it doesn't meet that. Given that the property was originally zoned industrial before it was moved into the industrial park in the 90s, it's not like we're, it's a stretch here to look at a different use of this property that it has historically always had.
Right, but when it became IP, it changed all that. I mean, if the zoning bylaw had a change of use variance, no problem. Because then it would allow for retail in that area. Would be the question.
Frankly, if we were just dealing with the growing aspect, I don't see that as being substantially more detrimental even within the industrial park than some of the previous uses that have been in the industrial parks, such as when we had the woodship operation there. I mean, you know, that was fairly intense use at the time. So, it's not like the industrial parks had nothing but nice, warm, fuzzy things in it all the years. So, the industrial part of it bothers me less than the addition of having some retail in the mix, which clearly has not been in, even in the IP zone for a while. But then you got the factor of right across the street, I mean, convenience store with gas pumps is a pretty intense retail use. You know? I mean, it generates a lot of traffic and, you know, people coming and going at all hours of the day and night.
So, based on the physical characteristics of the industrial park and the surrounding abutting properties, we have to make that decision if it doesn't impact. I don't think so. If we feel it doesn't, then they've met all three criteria and we should grant the variance.
Given the location of the property and the surrounding abutting properties, a gas station, car dealership, I don't see how this would have a negative impact of the surrounding properties. I believe that it meets the criteria for C.
Yeah.
I think we're all in agreement. How do we, how do we
I think we're all in agreement, how do we, how do we, do we need to make a motion?
Um.
Wait. Do I have to bring up all our access to?
We need to write the findings as part of the motion, just to protect what's dealt with.
Make a motion based on the, uh, application. Basically, this, yeah, okay. And every reason for being in this meeting.
Oh, no, yeah, I agree. Which is fine, then you want me to list all this? It doesn't matter. This is what we just talked about, you want that also?
I, the motion probably just entertaining the actual information that's on the application. That's what I'm answering to.
I, I, I think we should go through, uh, if, if, what the board wants to do is to approve the granting the variance with the following findings, that A, the property clearly suffers from a financial hardship that has been on the market for over five years, the property owner has substantially reduced the price in order to be able to sell the property, um, and that the literal enforcement of the provisions of the chapter would create a hardship. B, that there is a unique aspect to the physical characteristics of the property, it has no practical as, the, no, no, no actual ability for, um,
Access.
To access from Route Eight, it is separated from the remainder of the industrial park by the railroad track, and is somewhat isolated from the rest of the industrial park, which is so tamed, making um, circumstances relating to the shape of the property being a factor. And C, that we believe that the, having a benefit of use that brings benefit to the pound and does not appear to have substantial impact regarding traffic or, um, surrounding properties. I think this is appropriate.
I'll make a motion on all three criterias.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you can say that, or we can just say, okay.
Well, we need a natural motion that we can second. So if we could just, basically, I would address the applicant. The conditions that they put forward here in the application, would the three conditions that we just talked about, or the three findings we just we just discussed, not a damn motion.
Make a motion, we accept the application for Jesse and, oh, sorry, I make a motion, we accept the application for Ian Kertarska for property located at six Renfrew Street, requesting a variance under one twenty-five B, section two of the Adams zoning bylaws to operate cannabis cultivation facility and retail dispensary in an IP zoning district. Would the
With the.
All three conditions being.
I know the, with the findings as, as discussed.
With the findings as, as discussed, A, they're having problems selling it, they've been on the market for five years, so, and B, there's no access for Route Eight. They're, they're cut off because of the railroad tracks and rest of the park. And C, there's no detriment to the surrounding area that we've come up with. Being that there's a gas station next door, car dealer across the street, it's a busy area, and it can be self-contained.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second, Pam, if you could shoot that back to us, please.
Wow.
Real quick, too.
That you liked me. So, uh, a motion made by, well, a motion made by member Piagi, seconded by member Deal, to, um, grant the application of Ian Kertarska, and excuse, excuse me for that pronunciation, for property located at six Renfrew Street, requesting a variance under subsection, subsection one twenty-five dash three B two of the Adams zoning bylaw to operate cannabis cultivation facility and retail dispensary in an IP zoning district, seconded by member Deal, um, subject to the three findings discussed by zoning board members. Um, so you could maybe assist me with some of this. Number one would be, um, subject to a substantial financial hardship by the owner uh, attempting to sell the property for over five years. Um, B, or number two, has a unique aspect, um, and ability for access to Route Eight um, as well as being separated by the railroad track and separate from the IP park. Um, C, it would be no detriment to the park, it already is established, it's a busy area, and it would be self-contained.
This one's flight correction, and number two is the inability to set up a way, this is.
Here, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on that motion? You're going, if we could take a vote, Glenn?
I say yes.
Yes.
Aye.
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 And aye. Your variance has been granted this evening, there'll be a fourteen day decision notice filed with the town, you can follow up with Pam on that, and there'll be a twenty-one day appeal period, once it's been filed with the town clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Hopefully this business will take off and prosper.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
There it is. We actually approved the minutes on the list. Okay. Which I found no problem with, so. I will definitely accept them. My second.
Okay, we have, uh, motion to accept the minutes and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye. Next thing. Aye, it's playing.
Okay.
So everybody's here? And a second. Alright.
Be, uh, new business?
New business. Does that mean that we're now gonna move forward with use variances? Means we're gonna put away the zoning bylaws?
We're working on the zoning bylaws.
It's probably, yeah.
Yeah?
Go through the process, north of downtown, went through on the south of downtown. There's a lot of lines in the zoning.
So we, we have here, uh, member Piagi, one of the members, a retired neighbor, with his mention that he would mentioned to him that she would be interested in becoming a member of the zoning board of appeals, board members were hers by the update. Is there an update on that?
There isn't actually, because I've had some, uh, family emergency going on, so I haven't been able to talk to her about that. I'm gonna talk to her, but we can. She is interested.
I'm actually, I'm reading last week's.
Last month?
Last month, if you're reading, so, I'll just go off of that. New business, we have some new board members this evening. And, uh, it's very appreci-, you know, I think the whole board appreciates that you two fellows have stepped up and joined the board, and it's been, uh, pretty hard to get some membership here on this board. And, uh, very, uh, very happy to see that you guys are gonna plug in and help out with the town.
You'll be sorry.
I will, I will say thank you for your expertise on walking us through this one night tonight, that was, it was a good first night, this.
So, Dave, Dave's known me for a little bit, for, I don't know, two and a half decades.
Yeah, something like that.
And Glenn's known me sort of in a different role, otherwise.
It's true.
So just in case the board members don't know, yeah, I may, and I apologize ahead of time, I may come across as knowing more than I should. I've been, I've been a land use man for twenty-five years.
Oh, you're the perfect person for the board.
So, you know, and I've been at the trenches of enforcing zoning ordinances or bylaws.
Okay, you're sure.
Fun, now.
Just, just shut up.
You know, when, when the first time you get dragged into court and the judge, or you get asked by the attorney representing the person you're going after their temporary sign, and you lose because you answered the question over what makes this sign that's bolded into some railroad ties temporary inaccurately, out of your field of expertise, you learn real fast that, uh, some of these things, the specifics get really important. And especially in a case like this, where you know you've got the building property owner who has some concerns, whether he has the resources to appeal them or not, and go through the appeal process, you don't know, but if you slip up just procedurally, you get killed. I mean, that's the easiest thing for courts to overturn decisions on, is you didn't do it the right way. Not that the decision was wrong, and you did it the wrong way. That's an easy decision for them to make without having to get into the gory facts that they hate to get into. And, you know, so, uh, one thing I will encourage, I'll have a conversation with the chair about a few things about these Zoom public meetings and things you're supposed to do to, to, uh, deal with them, uh, incredibly correctly, as we've had some situations in Southern Berkshire that I'm aware of where the attorney general's office required certain things because boards did not enter into the Zoom meetings properly, and didn't make motions and votes quite properly. I mean, it's little crap like that that just, they can kill you on. And nobody wants to have that situation.
That's why I stalled while we were talking, and then I looked at you a lot, because I'm like, we should do something, I'm not, I'm, you know?
You know, and I mean, I'm, I'm not sure whether we would have been better served to put this off, you know, finally put that decision off maybe for a month.
No, we've already.
Write it down exactly what we wanted.
We've already put them off, already. Hmm? We've already put them off.
Yeah, and I wasn't aware of that, that's, and I, you know, I mean, I, I come, believe it or not, I come from a small business background, so I sort of understand, it's like, you know, we're both trying to do, get a business started, dealing with this stuff, like, it's important, but it's pretty far down our needs list. We just gotta, we gotta done.
Okay, we've made, uh, sorry. We've made recommendations to, uh, the selectmen before. On nights like tonight, it would have been great to have counsel here. And we have Cumberland Farms coming in pretty soon. Would it be a good idea if he was here for that night when we do this, because?
Well, I think the problem is, is that town council doesn't really participate in land use, because as, as Nat was saying, it's a very specific body of law. So, the chair should probably have a conversation with myself, or the community developer, or at least with Jerry, and Jerry could raise our attention and find out that we have funds budgeted specifically for a non-conflicted land use attorney, with use on Dubinor for the past, et cetera, and non-sterbule lines out this, this firm. Uh, yes, I, I mean, frankly, even, you know, between that night and Jerry, we were able to give the board some, you know, unofficial legal guidance, but yes, the board ever feels as though they're starting to get into a procedure or process that we haven't seen a lot, we've done a lot, it would be helpful to have that guidance, let Jerry know, we can certainly try to make those, those arrangements. No one wants to leave you out cold, what the hell do we do here? Um, and I was honestly thinking that, so I was sitting there like, maybe we should have had our own, you know, council, because they show up and they, you know, they flex, that's normal, it's normal legal, you know, posturing, but the conversation was good, Nat guided everyone accordingly, developed the record, make it very clear. That's, those are the important pieces, so we have to let Jerry know, we'll make those arrangements.
Alright.
Absolutely.
And, you know, frankly, you know, I don't know whether it will be controversial or not, it's maybe Cumberland Farms' application.
Is your employee still on TV?
Yeah.
Yeah, is, is the meeting still open right now?
Yeah, the meeting's still open.
What?
The, you know, somebody like Cumberland Farms, it's not like I, I feel too hesitant about, um, reaching into their pocket, uh, for them to pay for special, for the board, or something that. You know, that contentious or legally questionable, for them to provide the funds for the board to hire special legal counsel that has land use expertise to, you know, or a technical expert, I mean, you know, if you need a traffic engineer, because you wanna have their traffic plan reviewed, um, you know, there are provisions in state law to, that, hey, the developer gives, gives the town upfront money to pay for that service. And trip it up and get a, you know, get a traffic engineer to do a review, and the same thing with the, the other control thing for, you know, the, they don't want it.
I believe we did, um, ask the Cumberland Farms to do a traffic study the last time we had.
They did, yes.
You know, they did, they did launch around. Expert to review it, because, you know, believe me, the engineers are no different, yeah, I mean, they may work from numbers, but there are plenty of ways you can massage numbers to to come up with the answer that's pleasing to your mind.
And for example, conservation commission, uh, last Monday handled the Cumberland Farms review. In order to complete their review, they need a peer review, so the selectmen had to appoint as a special municipal employee to the purposes of MGL two sixty A, the ethics, the county commission law, Emily Sackman from Sackman Associates, she's, she's on both sides, she's represented in these valleys, she's represented in applicants. She's going to do peer review for the town's conservation commission. But her, she's gonna be paid by Cumberland Farms in order to do that. And that's, that's normal, normal process. In terms of Cumberland Farms, I believe with this body, I believe you'll only be asked to review for a petition to operate twenty-four hours. I think Cumberland, with the zoning bylaw change that was done at town meeting back in September, and subsequently approved by AG's office, they're, they're good to go, uh, they just require site plan approval via planning board, and I think this body will deal with the twenty-four hour operation, that's.
Nice.
That's that. But we're, you know, I can tell you, there's, there's items in the pipeline, for Adams, other businesses, it's always early stages, we don't know what the zoning implication or the site plan approval or special permit application process will, will look like, so we have to get the boards functioning well. We have to get good communication set up, because this is liable to expand the tax base of the town. That is the only way for us to, to deal with our expenses, is to continue to look at our incremental property, what is the highest investment use for them, and when developers come knocking on the door, we roll out the red carpet, and we say, let's have a good conversation about it, rather than just, no. That's not helpful. So, uh, there's a lot of good stuff in the pipeline and I think in a good way, the boards are going to be busy down the road. It's a good problem to have, but it's also a logistics challenge as well. Hopefully in a few more months, we can all resume to normal municipal operation and gather in one room.
One of the things that, that came to me tonight with Nat's expertise, uh, is I know myself, I started doing this with no training. And other than read the bylaws. And that would be helpful to me. Uh, to maybe have a well, you mentioned, uh, Dubendorf. God, I can never pronounce his name, but he's excellent and educating. Uh, and he's done, I don't know, he's been on the board piece, done trainings before, so that's Oh, I've, I've attended some of his sessions. Which only, you know, focuses how much I don't know.
So there typically in the fall, there are a couple of citizen planner training collaborative workshops held in the Berkshires that focus on, you know, a specific topic. You know, special permits. Other was one that just missed signing up for, um, writing appropriate findings.
Yeah.
You know, and I missed the deadline for signing up for, you know, and those, those, I, I presume that there must be some limited budget for boards to get training, you know, at twenty-five bucks a piece or something like that. Too terribly on the, but, you know, that, you know, it may take an hour or two on an evening, once a year or twice a year, but, you know, those
Oh, very good.
Is, is this, is, uh, the, I mean, there's nothing worse than getting dragged into court and having to be embashed because you, you know, didn't die around you. You did, you do something wrong. It's, it's a pretty awful feeling and it's, and it's, it's expensive. I mean, the town, the, if you get dragged into court, you know, town's got to pay an attorney, you know? Whoever's suing you's got to pay their attorney. The attorney's always win. Either one.
Pam, you tell us when those classes are right. I've gone to two or three of them. I guess we need to be vigilant when they do come up. Get as many of us to go down.
There's a lot of organizations that you can go to. You go to PRPC, you go to CPTC, you can go to Pioneer Regional Valley. They have a lot of online classes for most of them. Um, there are some subsites that are online, frankly, too, that you can just do yourself. So there is a lot of training out there.
Alright.
Especially now, because everybody's online.
Yeah, I mean, in some ways, they made it easier for them. It was perfect on, you know, being
So one other thing I think I'd like to bring up this evening would be, uh, you know, we discussed at the previous meetings about, uh, potentially starting to think about, uh, delegated chair and vice chair for the board. Know if it's something we might discuss this evening or think about it?
I'm clear on the next agenda, maybe.
Yeah. I think Pam was going to anyways. Yes?
Well, I think I just want to thank, uh, the new membership for the board this evening and, uh, hopefully those good for you guys and share them all.
Thank you.
Okay, this is when you know somebody's going to be unhappy. And you know them all.
If we could get a motion to adjourn this evening?
So, so we'll.
All in favor?
Aye.